It is six thirty. You'll lead us in a publication.
Yes, sir, sure. Please pray with me. Gervon, Father God, we love you. We just thank you for today. Thank you for the many blessings you give. God, we thank you for a new year. God, we pray for continued guidance, wisdom, Lord, for everybody involved tonight. God, and I pray that you would just continue to keep us safe and keep us healthy. We love you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Samantha, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the Lord Jesus Christ.
All right, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. Start with a roll call. Misty Cottle?
Here.
Jeff Houston. Jan Throgmorden. Marty Lindebury.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Dana McKnight.
Here.
Don Rollins.
Sir.
Jimmy Condon.
Here.
Our city attorney is present. Our city clerk is absent. Christie is filling in for Ann. So the first item on our agenda tonight is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes that need to be made to the agenda? Do we have a motion?
A motion.
The motion that we accept the agenda as presented.
Okay.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is the approval of our, of our minutes from the December fourteenth regular meeting. Do we have any changes that need to be made to those? Do we have a motion?
A motion that we accept the minutes.
We have a motion and a second to approve our minutes. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is our public forum. Do we have anyone who would like to address the council tonight? Samantha? All right, we'll close the public forum and move into our business reports. First is Planning Commission, Walter.
Good evening. Last month's meeting was a pretty short one. Simple. We just had a lot split and straightforward. We didn't really get much into discussing our upcoming draft title fourteen change. But we are, seems to be finally finishing the text of the different zones. And so next, I imagine, we'll be deciding where we want to use them and how. So input would be greatly appreciated. And so that will be happening here next Thursday, not this upcoming one, but then the twentieth, I think, great. Yes, the twentieth, six thirty here. So anybody here would like to give their two cents would be great. Any questions?
I think the twentieth is your regular one. The twenty-seventh is your special.
Yes.
Correct. Yes, and then twenty-seventh is our special. Yep. Oh, yeah, that's what we'll be discussing.
And you do have a lot split on the upcoming.
We do have a lot split on the upcoming agenda for our regular.
Okay. Any questions for Walter? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next is our court report. Tracy?
Okay. On us, our staff this month, our discursings were down about four thousand. And you may notice on the citations, the current month compared to the previous month, they were way down. Two forty-seven compared to three eighty-one. The way the holidays fell and stuff, we ended up only having one. We had three arraignment dates instead of four, and we had two trial dates instead of three, like we normally do. So we saw a lot less people. And I think we must have had a lot more last year, like, I don't know. There's a hundred and fifteen warrants issued in November and only twenty this month. I don't know. I don't know what happened there. But anyway, all in all, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty, we end up with about a hundred and fifty over. The only thing that's been going on with us is we're, we're still having a lot of people calling and saying, hey, I got COVID, I can't be there. And we're like, well, you need to make a phone call. That's not an excuse not to be here, not to call the prosecutor. That's the way we're handling most of those. We're still working on scanning, trying to do away with a few file cabinets eventually. And we do have a laptop on order when it gets here. So hopefully, if anybody has to quarantine, we'll still be able to be productive. I think that's about all I have.
Any questions for Tracy? Thank you, Tracy. Next is our library report. Blair?
All right, so as of four o'clock this afternoon, we have COVID rapid tests available at the library. In the first thirty minutes that we had them, we gave away over sixty kits. So we still have four boxes left, so a couple hundred are still left. There are two kits in each, or two tests in each kit. But they're going to be gone in the next day or week. We also have voter registration forms and twenty twenty-one tax forms available at the library. So if you're not registered to vote, you can come do that at the library. If you need to do your taxes, then we have the forms that you need. Another thing that I wanted to mention is that due to the Omicron surge, we have started streaming our storytimes for those who feel more comfortable staying at home. But we still have in-person storytimes, like they're still happening. We're just recording them and putting them up. And those happen on Tuesdays at ten a.m. You can also find registration for all of our events on our website now at westfortpubliclibrary.com, where you can also sign up to receive our newsletter. Any questions?
No.
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Blair. Chief Nelson, can you liven this bunch up a little bit?
Well, I can try. I don't know.
Hey, this is gonna be the quickest meeting ever.
Oh, chicken stick.
I've got four pages to read.
Does anybody have any questions? We, we had two, overall, we had two hundred more calls this year than we had last year. This month, we had a hundred and twenty-seven citations with sixty-nine warnings. We were up in warrants, which is a good thing. We were at seventy-one. We had nineteen drug arrests with eleven being felonies. Let me see if there's anything else of importance. Other than that shop with copper, well, we only had, out of all the kids, we had three that wanted to do it at home for fear of COVID, but everything seemed to work out and went smooth, and the kids enjoyed themselves. So that was great. Does anybody have any actual questions?
How do you shop with copper, huh?
Amazon. We had three that looked through Amazon and picked out what they wanted and we ordered it. Or they told us what they want, their Christmas list, and we ordered it. And then the rest wanted to go along. So that's how we handled that.
And they do a fabulous job, the shop with the copper. It's great. And they're so nice to the kids. And it's just a great outreach and.
Yeah, a lot of these kids, I mean, a lot of these policemen really enjoy it as much as the kids, I think. I really believe that.
Any questions for Chief? Other comments? Thank you, sir. Public Works.
This is where we go.
I've been waiting for it.
I have no story for it. We're trying to get the remainder of our meetings, or our meters in. We should be, we should be wrapped up by the end of the week. Nick and I had a construction meeting today. The rehab is on the tail end. The big project's on the tail end. Just a few items to shore up. I think Nick has got a bid package ready for planning the ponds out that he will have down to me to review. That's about all I got to report. I would like to point out, we are probably gonna have to do something at the community center on the sewer service line, so. We've had two backups, Christie, two or three backups in the last month and a half. So it's, it's really flat, so. I may get Nick involved in that as well. We may have to extend some sewer down there to catch it, so. It's, it's not fun at eight o'clock at night out there trying to poke it out. So. Oh, yeah, we're gonna try to fix that. And I think we'll have to do probably the same thing to Blair's service.
To the library.
Because she's had, she's had two or three backups there. So we changed up the eco-friendly toilets, which seem to help some of her service lines collect. Nick, do you have anything to add?
No, anything to put in the toilet moving back out. We're free and clear of White River now. I know that happened last week, so. I'll get Isaac a bid package Friday tomorrow. We'll be advertising in the Friday next, one week and a half.
Good.
So February will be opening bids in February.
And we're back on the clock with EQ. We gotta consolidate time. Slid the timeframe a little bit here, so.
That's all I got. The ground weather.
Yes. Hopefully. I'm just excited to see one hundred percent complete on the original project. That's, it's been a long time coming.
It has, yeah. We can't pay them for anything more on there besides the tanks, but we have one more test check in the water manholes where we had to order a pro here. He's trying to move, so.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear anything you were saying.
The giggle bells, or what?
No, I'm just sorry.
Yeah, as soon as they get done. I think they're gonna asphalt tomorrow here in front of Steve's house on White Street. And then we're gonna redo the cut back here on Main Street. I know game is probably gonna end with that one. It's pretty rough. It was pretty cold when they put that down, so, and you thought it doesn't look good and.
It did backwell, did it?
No. No. Then we should have them out here. That's all I got. Any questions?
Bethany Briner? Okay, thank you, sir. Parks. Mr. Harrison?
Yeah, so it's pretty slow for us in the summer between holidays and the weather, so. But we have been working on getting our registration for softball and baseball season, and we'll probably start that in the next few days or early next week, the latest, to get that started already through the latter part of February, and then we'll start organizing teams and everything after that. Just been working on fields when the weather's allowed and only go four sun and just try and be ready for the season and the spring that's coming. I did a while back purchase a five-head mini-split unit, which is a heating and cooling unit that is very efficient and very economical as well. We're gonna get pricing now to install in Carter Park position stand and bathrooms. We're trying to work, get a plan to get that heated. And I hope to get all that done before high school games start in March, so. That's been a long time coming. We'll be able, we won't have to shut it down in the winter and travel in our eyes and all that, but also allow to keep those bathrooms open and make much better runs going there. Still, cold, still. So working on that and getting ready for signups in the season, and that's about all we're doing right now, so. We do have another disc golf tournament that we're working on. Looks like we're gonna schedule it for March nineteenth. It's gonna be a second annual. It was our first tournament we held the last year, so we do have a date set for that and should be getting that out soon. Start taking registration for that. And then we will do the Tiger Classic again. We're still looking at it. About all I got.
Any questions for Chad? Thank you, sir. Chief Myers?
Seventy-seven calls for last month. I'm running a valid model for the year, it seemed like. Two calls short of nine hundred, which to my knowledge would be probably the busiest year we've had that I know of, so. But it's a hundred and thirteen over last year. We do have a few out with COVID, unfortunately, but it's probably a good one by the time. I don't know if I mentioned that last month. I don't know when the readings fell, but if I did, you're gonna hear it again. Court of Court did approve the funds to do airbags for the little fire departments. I say cool, they're gonna do it for April too, I believe, so it'll save us a ton of money. So I don't know when yet, but that's gonna save us a lot of money. We're really thankful for that. Other than that, that's all I got.
Any questions for the chief?
So before he sits down, I just wanna go over a couple things that Chief Myers gave me. So what's it been, two years now you guys bought some software and started tracking some of your response times? Yeah, two, three years? And I think we're one of the only smaller town fire departments that are tracking this data.
Some of the, yeah, some of the rather smaller fire departments is not cost feasible for them to do it. They might not call the body.
And so he can make this available to anyone that's interested in it, but I did wanna mention that I thought this was just amazing for a volunteer fire department. So our response time within the city limits of Westport, and this is from dispatch to arrival, is five minutes and fifty-six seconds. At Greenland, it's seven minutes forty-five seconds, and in the county, eleven minutes twenty seconds. So I'm very happy with those times. I mean, to me, that's just.
And with the pandemic going on.
Yeah. But then the fact that you guys are tracking that data and that we can, we can look and see.
That was awesome to have.
And so in this, I can also tell you that Tuesdays between five and six is when the fire department is most busy, so look out for that, those times.
You just gotta know those things.
It is, yeah. Who would've guessed, right?
After I go home, that's great.
Yeah. So anyway, thanks for putting that together.
Okay. Christie?
So the city increased our bank balances by a hundred and fifty-nine thousand for twenty twenty-one. The departments came in three hundred and thirty-one thousand under budget. You will notice that quite a few of the budgets show that their apartment came in over budget. The majority of that was due to the federal expenses with the lump sum increase that weren't budgeted, so we had approved that, knew that was coming. And the parks budget looks really off, but we had approved him to use some money out of his reserves mid-year. So even though the numbers are coming in a little budgeted, it's stuff that we had approved beforehand. The sales tax did stay steady at just over nine percent for the city. And the water department increased their cash balances by fourteen hundred and did end up coming in under budget by ten thousand dollars this year, which is okay, obviously, but that's not really where we need it to be for next year with our payments coming in. But I think overall, let's go back and look at their year, maybe their first year. So for the year, we brought in six hundred and twenty-six thousand in sewer sales, and we paid the city a pay-it bill of four hundred and thirty-six thousand to treat it, so that's what we're on now. The only other thing besides the financials that I have is we did receive notice this week that the Congress has changed basically all of the regulations on ARPA. Now that everybody's started spending money, they've changed it, of course. They've actually broadened what we can use it for. And my understanding, the wording that they're using is pretty much can be now be used for any governmental spending. We do have a training session with the Treasury tomorrow, a Zoom session, and then Artis something is going on at two tomorrow. So my upcoming tomorrow, we'll learn more about this because we don't really know. I don't know if Tom knows.
Just to learn.
More than that, or then if it's a government expense at this point, you can use it for.
Reporting requirements, cut some. Just nice. All right. Was there any questions for Christie? All right. So we have no old business. We have two items of new business. One is, item one is the resolution two zero two-two dash zero one, and that is for the twenty twenty-one budget adjustments. And on that, what we do is we bring all of those line items that have went below zero, that went into negatives, we bring those back up to zero, right? And we do that, we do that every year so that we can just balance, balance those line items out. Are there any questions concerning the budget adjustments, what we're doing in line? Okay, do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we pass resolution twenty twenty-two dash over the twenty twenty-one budget adjustments.
A second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. So next is our twenty twenty-one State of the City. I think everyone has a copy of that. I'll read it. "Westport completed many of our stated goals set for twenty twenty-one, and I am encouraged by the momentum we are carrying into twenty twenty-two. Each city department has continued to deal with the COVID pandemic in some fashion in twenty twenty-one, but as a whole, we have worked together to minimize any city disruptions. The city could not have asked for a more dedicated group of employees who committed to staying safe while also striving to maintain city functions. The treasurer's office. The twenty twenty-one report for the treasurer's office shows continued diligence with city funds and highlights many of the city's changes for the year. Bank balances increased for both the city and water department, one fifty-nine, one ninety-three, and fourteen eighty-three, respectively, with both departments coming in under their budgets, about three thirty-one, zero five four, and ten two one six, respectively. The city also applied for and received two hundred and seventy-five thousand in American Rescue Plan Fund money. We saw our city sales tax increase by nine point six nine percent as compared to twenty twenty, and the chemist's sales tax was up by eight point one six percent when compared to twenty twenty. We will continue to monitor our sales tax income as we move into twenty-two. The city reported fifty-five active business licenses, up three from twenty twenty, seven new home building permits, and eighteen plumbing permits. In addition to this, the planning commission approved a twenty-eight lot subdivision. The treasurer's office will continue to look for improvements in our processes and will be implementing a new payment platform in the water office for twenty twenty-two. The Westport Parks and Recreation Department maintained efficient operation and care for the parks and park facilities, programs, and events through twenty-one. Although there were still some challenges due to COVID, we were able to keep the parks open and programs and facilities functioning, including our youth sports programs and our annual Independence Day celebration at Carter Park. The department, with assistance from Parks Committee and other city departments, has been able to not only maintain our parks, but improve upon them with several additions and upgrades to the park system. Although numbers were down for our spring baseball softball season, it was still very successful with over two hundred kids participating on eighteen Westport teams. Unfortunately, the fall baseball softball league did not have enough participants and was canceled, but we were able to have our flag football program. We continue to improve the Carter Park Disc Golf Course, making it one of the most fun and popular courses in the area. That's fact, not opinion. We hosted three major disc golf tournaments this year with over three hundred players competing. In addition, there were two to three small mini-tournaments a month held throughout the year with dozens participating each month. I feel confident the Disc Golf Course brought thousands of visitors to the beautiful town in twenty twenty-one. The Parks Department oversaw the duties of Westport's Tree City USA and continued to work for Tree City recognition again in twenty-one. We constructed a new bicycle slash pedestrian trail at Carter Park. The trail is eight foot wide. It's a hard surface trail approximately six tenths of a mile long, which circles the baseball softball section of the park. This is the first bicycle-inclusive trail in the city, and we are extremely excited about this addition to the park system. We completed a major infield reconstruction on Field Two at Carter Park, creating a much better playing field and decreasing our maintenance costs and time to a fraction of what it has been in the past. This project was long overdue, and the department will benefit from it immensely. The city was released from their grant obligations from U.R. Parks, which allowed the Parks Department to return property to the school, relinquishing all cost maintenance and responsibilities of the property. The Parks Department wanted to continue to honor the Mueller family by dedicating and renaming Field Two the Paul Mueller Memorial Field at Carter Park and installing a memorial plaque at the field to forever honor the Mueller family. A field dedication ceremony was held at our annual Independence Day celebration on July first. We accomplished several upgrades and improvements throughout the year in all of our parks, including new LED lighting in all large park pavilions, planting new trees in the gardens, creating a hammock park within Riverside Park, adding additional dogway stations to all parks, just to name a few. We assisted other city departments and committees to accomplish projects, host events, programs, improve and beautify our city, and much more. Making twenty twenty-one a very productive and successful year for the Westport Parks Department. Police Department. In twenty-one, was a very productive year for the police department. The following is a summary of accomplishments of the police department and our goals for twenty-two. Numerous training hours, which include yearly firearm training, racial profiling, domestic battery, school safety, and many others. Year-to-date total calls for service, four thousand two hundred and fifty-six. Assisted in the possession, in the procession for fallen officer Kevin Apple, the P Ridge Police Department. Assisted in the procession for injured officer Tyler Franks of the Prairie Grove Police Department. Participated in the Westport Parade, and Chief gave a speech. Participated in trunk or tree, visited two daycare centers for Halloween and passed out candy. Attended a grand reopening of the Westport Library. Participated in the City of Lights Parade and the Westport Elementary Parade of Lights. Patrol Officer Cordero reads to elementary students. We had sixty-eight drug arrests for the year, secured a twenty-five hundred dollar L.L.E.B.G. grant. Sergeant Riley and local resident John Young assisted in saving the life of a young college student whose vehicle was on fire while he was inside. Due to this, young man was, due to this, the young man was able to escape with burns on his lower extremities and now has since recovered. Shop with a cop was able to provide Christmas presents for twenty local children. Several officers provided training at the Northwest Arkansas Law Enforcement Training Academy, and we were able to provide security cameras for the police and courts building. Goals for next year include working on securing a thirty thousand dollar grant to upgrade our body and vehicle cameras. We are also working with Washington County to obtain access to their computer-aided dispatch, which will assist us in the safety of our, of officers' call locations, joint calls for service within the county. Public Works. Twenty twenty-one achievements began even out through the year, with paving and water projects again receiving attention rather than only focusing on sewer repairs. We installed eight new water accounts, three sewer connections. We were able to pave eleven thousand eight hundred feet of streets consisting of overlays and new paving. We received state aid in paving ninety-four hundred feet while budgeting city dollars for the remaining twenty-four hundred. Public Works continued to work on the reduction of inflow and infiltration by replacing fifty-one hundred feet of sewer main pipe. With federal ARPA funds, Public Works purchased five hundred new cellular water meters, of which three hundred and twenty-five have been installed. We anticipate a reduction in water loss due to the replacement of these meters. Final closeout of the sewer project has not been completed, but will happen in twenty twenty-two with the remediation of the wastewater facility. Library. Beginning of the year saw a library reopening with expanded curbside service and high-speed Wi-Fi access in the building and in the parking lot. Online usage of library materials such as ebooks and e-resources are still increasing, as well as patrons using the library's website to place holds on physical materials to be picked up, like books, DVDs, and mobile hotspots. Our programs and services include one-on-one tech support, media fact-checking. In the midst of the technological disparities exacerbated by the COVID-nineteen pandemic, yes, those are my words, we remain dedicated to helping our patrons navigate information ecosystems and promoting the technological capabilities and digital literacies they need to exist successfully in the twenty-first century. In addition to serving patrons virtually, the library continued to fulfill its mission in building community face-to-face. Programs that emphasized educating patrons about art, history, science, and literature were well attended. Our storytimes promoted early literacy and helped. Our storytimes promoted early literacy and helped parents connect with other parents. The book club that meets monthly discusses the latest in new fiction, and our volunteer program provides teens with the soft skills they need in the workplace. Our Magic Passports program geared toward children being educated at home provides a primer on geography and cultural exchange with books and activities that encourage development of global perspectives. Into the new year, the West Fork Public Library will continue to nurture a thoughtful and informed citizenry and foster a lifelong love of reading and learning. The Fire Department. Had a wonderful year in 21. They were able to add some new equipment along with a new station for better coverage. They added battery-powered extrication equipment from Precision Rescue, which will better serve our community in auto extrication by making the job quicker and easier where time is of the essence. We added a new substation on Sugar Mountain Road, which will help with response times in the southeast part of our coverage area. We are adding a new brush truck to our Greenland Station, as well as a brush truck and engine to the Sugar Mount, Sugar Mountain Station. Our response times for 21 have remained around eleven minutes, twenty minutes, eleven minutes, twenty seconds in the county and six minutes in the city limits. These times are our dispatch to arrival times. Our call volume went up one hundred and thirteen over the year, over last year. Our training has been on track for 2021, even with COVID still a factor. The chief states that he is proud of all firefighters for maintaining an excellent response during the pandemic and hopes 22 will be a year where they can continue to add new equipment, better serve our community. In the court. 21 brought us closer to pre-COVID procedures. Masks were required in the courtroom until November. We have continued to send out reminder emails about payments and upcoming or missed court dates. Most people find the reminders extremely helpful, and it helps us by cutting down on the number of warrants that are issued. We are still receiving lots of great comments on our post-remodel look from defendants to people looking for administration parks or the police department. It is a great asset to have the revenue office in our building for people that have had their licenses suspended, they're able to pay their reinstatement fees, or they can renew their tags and then bring the registration down the hall and take care of their tickets. Another benefit of having the revenue office in our building is the prosecutors can use the waiting area to see defendants and maintain social distance. There are frequent requests to stay, frequent requests to add another day for the West Fork Revenue Office. Prosecutors also enjoy the view and sunshine that comes in the large windows. We did have a surprise one day when a snake came in to visit. We managed to re-home him with no harm to him or his rescuers. Our ability to take credit card payments over the phone is getting increasingly popular, but still does not offer options for auto payments or the ability to save credit card information. We have already started looking into other options for 22. The courts worked on thirty-five-hundred-and-eighty-nine city cases, thirteen-hundred-and-fifty-one county cases, and three thousand one hundred and forty state cases this year. There were eight-hundred-and-sixty-six warrants issued, one hundred and fifty-seven were recalled, and six-hundred-and-eighty-two were served. On the technology front, we have started scanning files with laser fish and hope to get more done this year to eliminate some file cadence. Laptop is on, is on order to enable us to work remotely as needed. As you can see, 21 was a very productive year for the city of West Fork. Our revenues increased at a greater rate than our expenses. We added new homes. Each department was successful in attaining many of their stated goals for 2020. With the success and achievements gained in 21, I am encouraged and excited with the vision and goals set forth for the coming year. That is the State of the City for 2021.
John, I should have brought my teacups. You got them dry or eating all that?
Yeah.
All right. So next item on the agenda is other business. Does anyone have any other business?
I do.
So. In front of each of you, I put, put a piece of paper down there where I went through the budget, and I took city dollars, city income dollars, and broke that out, broke it out by a percentage of those dollars of our total dollars. And as Christie pointed out, what, what I have here is the city budget. Okay? This doesn't include the street budget. But the line items that I chose are line items that this body has control over. Okay? So decisions made by this body affect these line items, and decisions made by the planning commission are going to affect the line items. And so you guys can see there, I tried to not only list what the line item was, so sales tax, how is, how is sales tax generated, it's sales within the city limits, whether that's online or, or in person within the city limits. But some of these, we don't think about as much. Building permits from, from the planning commission. You know, that's, as the planning commission approves things, we're getting dollars for those permits. Do they need to be adjusted? Possibly so. One that we don't think of often is our county property taxes. The city receives county property tax, and the way that, the way that works is, the county goes through and they value all the property within the county and then within the city limits. And then we are given a portion of the, the county taxes that are paid on that property based on our value. And so why is that important to us? Well, we have an aging school. Property values are going down on it, right? We have some aging homes. Property values are going down theoretically. So every time someone builds new construction in the city, that's a, that's an increase in property value, especially if we have a vacant lot that's getting built upon. Okay? We're increasing property values immensely. So all of those things add to city income. And that's a good thing, right? But as I was, I've been, I've been concerned with a couple of things with city income and, and how we, how we increase city income. And then it dawned upon me, why aren't we increasing city income? So I come from the business world where that's, I mean, that's the name of the game. We're always trying to, what can I do to, to generate more revenue? I mean, that's daily, that's, that's my discussions. And I, I try to temper myself when I'm doing city business because that's not, that's not it at the end of the day, right? We're not here to make money. But we are here to provide services for the citizens, to provide the infrastructure and different things. All of those things take, take revenue. So I have to, to catch myself every now and then to try not to be too private sector-driven, right? Not, not to be chasing revenues. But it is important that the city is always looking at, how do we increase revenues? Where do our revenues come from? And what decisions could we possibly make without realizing it that can reduce those revenues? So that's the reason I put that before you. The other reason I put that before you is, over the past few years, we've been very successful in, in several aspects. But one in particular, I hated driving through this town and seeing a sidewalk that went somewhere, it stopped. We had people walking out in the road to get to the next piece of sidewalk. Dana, you're a walker, you can appreciate some of that. So Isaac has been, he's done a great job getting those gaps filled in. We now have connectivity. I think just about everywhere, we're, we're working on one of the last pieces currently, getting around to the parks interest, but we at least did get to the park with the sidewalk. I want, one of my goals, and I hope all of you guys will, will get on board with me, but I want connectivity between our park system. And I don't mean tiptoeing across a bridge hoping that you don't get ran over or knocked off of it. So one of the goals that I'm setting for the city for 2022 is to get a plan in place. I don't think we're going to get the bridge replaced in one year, but I do think we can get a plan in place with funding and a design so that this town can finally have connectivity on both sides of the river for pedestrians. If you'll notice on the top of that sheet I handed out with all the city revenues are the names and numbers of our state senator and our state representative. The more I thought about this, Isaac, myself have called guys at the road department, different places, and we haven't seen any traction, right? And so I got to thinking about that, and I gripe constantly. People in this town, they go to Facebook and they complain that they've done this or they've done that, but they've never came to this body and asked for things. That aggravates me. And I got to thinking, you know what? I'm, I'm doing exactly what I'm complaining about. So I'm asking the city council to join me in wearing these two folks' phones out or emails out in asking for a new bridge that has a pedestrian walkway. They are, they are essentially this body, right? With the state, you guys control the purse strings of, of our road department, of our sidewalk department, they control the purse strings of the state's. So I'm asking you guys to join me in being the squeaky wheel and trying to get some connectivity across the, across the city, particularly within our parks. I would like, I would like a sidewalk that connects all of our parks so that our, our walkers in the city, those people who are enjoying that, that outdoor activity can traverse from one park to the next. Because I know good and well that some of the elderly folks aren't walking across that bridge, and I know that they would if, if there was a dedicated space across it.
Mayor, how old is that bridge?
What did we decide, Isaac? It was built in the seventies?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one. Isaac and myself and Christie did meet with a grant writer. So she, she works pro bono. She writes different grants for different things, and she, the way she gets paid is she gets grants approved. So we have had a meeting with, with her. The city's done some other business with her in another, another area. She, it's the same lady who made the purchase for all of our easements on the sewer line going up to Fayetteville. She also does grant writing for, for many cities. So I've had a meeting with her, we've talked to her, and we told her that we're not interested in a grant or this grant, we're interested in any grant that concerns infrastructure, sidewalks, streets, water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure. We want her looking at everything that's out there available and, and writing us in on it. We're interested in, in whatever she can get us. So it was a good meeting. We haven't heard anything back, but that was just last month. So hopefully we, we get some, some communication back about what is available and, and what she's putting together for us. So in this same thread, our planning commission is, is struggling through rewriting our zoning ordinances. I say they're struggling through it, they're, it's, it's a chore. You guys can imagine rewriting our code book, right? It's a chore. A lot of the discussion in the planning is around what kind of building do we want to see in West Fork? And I, I'm not getting into the fray, Walter, you guys are doing a good job debating it. What I can tell you is multifamily developments are being looked at in the city of West Fork. People are wanting to put in multifamily developments. Mr. Carnes and myself have both written letters to Harps Corporate this week, asking them to, for a variance in their covenants. Some of that land has been bought around Harps, and they're wanting to put multifamily townhouses over there. Harps Covenant currently does not allow that. So they, the developer asked myself and Mr. Carnes to write a letter saying that we were in favor of that. So I, I say all that to say that whether we're talking about West Fork or we're talking about Greenland, growth is coming down the I-49 corridor. I think it's safe to say that we're not going to see a lot of growth downtown West Fork right now. We probably aren't going to see a lot of growth on Highway 71 in West Fork right now. But that corridor section between here and Greenland is about to blow up. If, if, if what we're hearing comes true between here and Greenland, the Greenland mayor is talking to different developers than the West Fork mayor, but it's developers nonetheless, and they're all looking at that corridor. It's easy access, it's, it's serving a need that, that can't be filled going east or west in Elkins or Prairie Grove Farmington. So that's where we're about to see growth, is what it's looking like. Isaac's currently looking into, what do we do about water over there? What do we do about sewer over there? We're looking at some annexations over there. I'm just bringing you guys kind of up to snuff where we're at with it. We've been told that the quarry is probably going to reopen, and when it reopens, it's going to be annexed into the city. That'll be sales tax dollars for every load of gravel that comes out of there. Again, what are we going to do with that, with that income, that revenue? We need to put it into something. But I do want to bring up that the planning commission is currently limiting development sizes to two stories. There's been a lot of discussion about that. I can tell you that most of the developers coming in here are looking at greater than two stories. They're wanting three and four-story developments. Walter's coming here each month, and he's asking for you guys' input on that, and I think that's something the council needs to, to put some thought into, realize that that, that's a big concern right now. We have a developer talking, no, there's no promises anywhere, talking about a three-hundred-unit development, but none of it is two stories or less. It is all three stories at a minimum. Is that something that we want? Do we want somebody coming in here putting in a huge apartment complex? That, that is information that, that the planning commission, they're working through those things right now. They need to know the direction of, we need to know what the residents think, but they particularly need to know what this body thinks about some of that. And so finally, in this vein, I would like to say that I think many, many people sitting on this body, I know several of the people sitting on the planning commission are still upset at, at the co-op. They came in, they rezoned that property, and then they left and they didn't build anything. I want to prepare the planning commission and the city council for the fact that those guys are coming in here and they're throwing around ideas and dollars, whether it's the co-op or whether it's another one. What, what I'm quickly coming to realize is they've got a thousand different ideas, and basically whichever idea winds up sticking is where they're going. Okay? And so a lot of cities get sideways with developers because there's a change in plans. But I think we need to, to keep an open mind that they're purchasing land, they've got dollars they have to spend that have to return dollars. And so their plans are, they're evolving, right? They're trying to get something in that makes money, and the city at the same time is trying to say, hey, you know, we're either for this or we're against it, but you changed your mind. And we can't get hung up on the fact that, that developers are changing, changing plans. That's all I'm trying to, to get across, is that when, when they come in originally, the plan may be one thing, but by the time it gets to fruition and, and they secure the funding for it, that plan may have changed. And especially in a, in an economy like, like we're having now, we're talking about increasing interest rates. That, that could spur people to act a little quicker. Those guys sitting on the twenty-eight lot subdivision over on Smith Street, that, that's fine to sit on it, two percent or three percent interest, but as those rates go up, that may make them, make it more attractive to, to get something done and get a return on that investment, right? So I just say all that just to bring it to everyone's attention, keep it on the forefront. I don't know how much we'll see in the next year, but within two years to three years, I think it's going to be a changed landscape. And I don't think it's going to be in West Fork City proper. Any thoughts or comments on that? Will we move into the mayor's comments? That was all other business, John.
It's good. Well, when we start building three-story and stuff, can a fire truck is, they get expensive.
They do. That's exactly right. And so Christie and I had this conversation two months ago, three months ago. We just talked about if somebody put in a, a three-story, one particular project that's been thrown around, it's a three-hundred-million-dollar project, that greatly increases our property taxes and what we get, right? But how long does it take us to get that? Have you noticed the last time you bought a house, you don't pay property taxes that first year? It takes another year before the property taxes are due? So that's exactly right. They build that, and we're still a year out on collecting property taxes to try to get Mark a ladder. So, so those are, those are the things, that's why I'm bringing this up now. Do we say we only want two-story because that's the biggest truck and ladder we have right now? I don't know, maybe it is. I'm just saying, or do we say, we need to figure out a way to get a bigger truck? I don't know. That's your decision to make.
But three or four stories on the same piece of land could mean a lot more income.
It could mean a lot more income. Sales tax, it's definitely, I should have, I should have made copies of the letter that Mr. Carnes wrote at Harps. Mr. Carnes wrote at Harps. Our school population is currently, I believe, he quoted it, eight hundred and seventy students? And I don't remember what that's down from, Walter, from his presentation to the-
Oh, it was the year fourteen? No, we grew up in the after-
I, I, I want to say that we were up close to two thousand students at one time when Westport and Irwin Greenland and Winslow Consolidated. We were up north of fifteen hundred. We're down to eight hundred and seventy students now in our school. Part of that is because if, if we look at our demographics in Westport, we have a lot of single-family homes. We only have single-family homes. We have, you know, some duplexes, but we don't have any multifamily developments. But a lot of those single-family homes are, are being inhabited by, by grandma, right? She don't have any kids to, to put in the school. We're, we're turning into an older community. Nothing necessarily wrong with that, but it certainly takes its toll on our school district. So multifamily definitely brings some, probably some revenue, but also most likely there's going to be students from schools as well. Dina, you were going to say something?
Well, I'm kind of going back. So a lot of times when you write letters to people or you're trying to get something from people, if you have like key phrases or points that you include in your appeal, it's helpful. So like if we were to write this letter for the bridge with the pedestrian walkway, are there any key phrases or ideas that we need to include in there to get their attention or to convince them in a better way?
Don't make me come down there.
Nick, do you have any thoughts on that?
Oh, gosh, you're putting me on the spot here.
Well, maybe you can bring it next time then, but, you know.
Yeah, no, I think that's-
If I don't take the time to write a letter, I want to make sure I include all the important information.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's a good point, Dina. Any other thoughts before we move into mayor's comments?
I may answer Dina's questions in mayor's comments, but I've been saving this for last.
Are we good to move?
Yeah.
So mayor's comments. As most of you are aware, I do not follow Facebook or do not participate in Facebook. However, because of that fact, just about everybody in this room and every other person I know shows me what is on Facebook that concerns me, right? They don't know what concerns me until they show it. But this week, it was brought to my attention that somebody had went out on Facebook and they had used Yellowstone characters to describe all of the cities in northwest Arkansas. And I am happy to admit, we are ripped. So Dina, if they don't fix that bridge, we will take them to the train station. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hey, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you all.